Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 2nd, 2024 regularly scheduled meeting of the Cohasset School Committee. Would everyone present who is willing able, please rise for our statement of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. All right, we'll call the meeting to order with a roll call. Would all members who are present, please indicate so by saying, present. Mr. Carr.
All right.
Mrs. Hannah.
Present.
Mrs. Leskey.
Present.
Mr. Dial will be a few minutes late, but he will be here. Chair is present, giving us a call to move forward at this time. I would remind everyone that this meeting is being broadcast on Cohasset 143 TV. It's also being livestreamed on Facebook. And you can participate virtually by logging into Zoom and the meeting and passcode is at the top of the agenda. We welcome any questions utilizing the Q and A feature on Zoom if you can't be here in person. And here is Mr. Dial walking in now, so we'll count him as on time.
Yes, score. I tried really hard.
I'll take some public comment at this time, and just a reminder for everyone that's watching, public comment is reserved for concerns or thoughts or questions or comments that are not related to items that are already on the agenda. If you have a thought or something to share relative to an agenda item, just simply wait until we arrive at that point in the agenda to do so, and we would be happy to hear from you. Otherwise, if you have something that's not related to anything on the agenda, please take a moment to utilize that Q and A feature and type your question or comment into the field, and we will address it right now. I'll give everyone a few seconds to do that. There is no one in the audience other than our invited guests. So I don't think there will be any in-person comments.
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Seeing no public comments, and please do though, if you do pop in late and miss that portion, please feel free to utilize that. And as we see it, and as we see, we'll address it at an appropriate time. We always want people to be able to participate. They are able. At that point, we'll move right into the first agenda section, which is reserved for invited guests. And we do have an invited guest today. We have the superintendent of the South Shore Technical High School with us to discuss a potential MSBA project for that wonderful institution. And so I'd invite Superintendent Tom Hickey to come to the table and explain to the school committee whatever we'd like to share.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate your courtesy of letting me come to address you tonight. I provided some handouts to committee members. Feel free to review those. I'll try to just give you a high level overview of where we are and perhaps for some in town, you know, who we are. One of the documents is found on our school building project website, southshoretechproject.com. It provides an overview of what our future might look like. The other document is a is a series of PowerPoint slides that talk about Cohasset's history with our school, some recent enrollment history, and two topics, one being the potential future building project. And then another topic, which at the risk of confusing matters, is something we're going to be bringing to special town meeting, which is a tweak to our regional agreement about how we apportion debt. I won't spend as much oxygen on that, but if you do hear South Shore Tech mentioned, it certainly could be about our building project, but it will definitely be a matter of it's unrelated, but connected in some in some fashion. We currently have an arrangement in our regional agreement that says when debt gets assessed to our nine towns, it's assessed fixed at the time that you start borrowing. This will change if it's approved by our communities, and we'll move it to a four-year average so that as enrollment changes, a debt share might change. Okay, that's the boring stuff. Now, the more interesting stuff is about where we stand with a potential new project. So if you didn't know, Cohasset was one of the six towns that formed our school. The school was the second oldest in Massachusetts, and it was chartered in 1960, and the doors opened in 62. And we've been and we've been doing what we do well, I think, since that time. I've been fortunate to be at the school for 30 years and started there as a teacher. And I've served in this role for this is my 14th year as superintendent, so I I come with a bit of a bias like, you know, I think we do a good job, and if we don't, you can you can certainly direct any concerns to me. But I have been very fortunate to have Cohasset as a partner all these years, even though even though the number of students enrolled from Cohasset might be small, that does not take away the fact that this community finds vocational education to be valuable and as Cohasset's second public high school and a viable path for where it is the right fit. So we tried for six years to get in the MSBA pipeline. Perhaps you're familiar with that process. Let me guess. Yes, of course you are. And we started applying in 2015. We took it as somewhat a maybe a badge of pride that, you know, we weren't getting invited in because our building is well maintained. Well, that 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 wore thin pretty quickly as years two, three, four, five, and so on go by. But in but in 2021, we were able to we were able to get invited in. Fast forward to today, we have a project team, and we've designed what I think is the best value project for our region for the next 50 years, and that is for us to build. And I was a convert to this. I wasn't there at the beginning in terms of wanting to do something new, but we're looking to build a 900-student school on the ball fields behind our school, which is on Route 123 in Hanover Webster Street. This school would address all of the deficiencies that we have in a school that has an of a 1960s vintage. Again, I'm probably talking to familiar familiar stories here as well, right? Everything is small, systems are systems are in decline. We've done the best that we can. We have a waiting list of 75 to 100 students from within our district. We just brought in the town of Marshfield as our ninth community, which we see as a good move. That was a town that had no access to vocational education, and that's a town that can cost share the costs of this of this project. We offer 12 vocational majors right now, many traditional trade majors like automotive and carpentry, welding, et cetera. We've added newer programs in the last 15-plus years, computer info technology. We've expanded our design visual communications. Seven years ago, we were open border culture landscape. And if we get this new building, we'll be adding a plumbing program and a veterinary science program, which we see as a more local option for students in turn, just in terms of geography, both of which have data to back up how is such a strong labor market demand. I I think that with with that said, the only other the only other question that might come up in the early phases is, okay, how are you going to know if this thing is approved? And what's the potential? What are you forecasting for potential costs? So I can I'll briefly talk about the process, and then and then one of the slides I have in here talks about talks about early projections for cost. The process is a regional school district like ours gets to go directly to the voters. And so our school committee, which is which is a single individual appointed by each town, our school committee opted to go to a just a special district election. So on Saturday, January 25th, 2025, all nine of our towns will be invited to have their registered voters go to a polling place in the respective towns and vote yea or nay. Do you support the project or not? A yea vote in the aggregate, if that prevails, 50% plus one, and if that prevails, the project is considered approved. What makes this election unique, unlike a municipal election, if you will, is that the question of how a community funds the project comes at the direction of the community. What do I mean by that? It means most of our communities are going to, A, host the election, see if it passes, and then go ask their voters how they want to fund their share of the debt. Parentheses, it's probably a debt exclusion in most of our communities. And that's something that I'm hearing from other communities is probably the mechanics of which is tied to the spring election ballot. And so the unique part is the approval in January triggers the next, you know, one of the next steps, and that's that's my guess. So one of the things that we're going to be doing at the end of this month, after the MSBA board meeting of October 30th, is be able to push out more finite, precise numbers and some ideas of how we're going to borrow. I don't mind telling you a couple of things that, because I'm doing my own calculations and then contacting Unibank and, you know, so I put my own asterisk by this, but I'm looking at a borrowing model where we would do short-term borrowing for three, at least three or four years, and the full bonding would roll on in fiscal 30. The message from our communities is clear. We love you. We value you. You do a great job. But boy, do we have a big haunting list of other capital things going on. So could you please keep that in mind? And I think the answer is absolutely yes. So by doing interest-only borrowing early, it's going to assist communities as they have to feather, perhaps feather this project in with other competing demands that that might be that might be on on the horizon. I've run some numbers. Cohasset's enrollment share right now is about one and a half percent of our district. This project could this project, the MSBA will likely approve officially. This project is $276 million, $111 million grant, about $165 million to parse out at the local level. When I go to the DOR tax impact calculator, I'm looking at perhaps a high watermark for Cohasset of being somewhere between $45 to $60 a year for the average assessed home. Now, that's based on current enrollment. Enrollment could fluctuate based on that regional agreement thing I just talked about. But in the last 20 years, just for, you know, great, this will be great at dinner parties. In the last 20 years, Cohasset's enrollment has been anywhere from about a half a percent to about 2%. And so that is something that is, that's always a legitimate question. Our point that we want to make, and that's why your invitation or you're allowing me to to come here, is to raise awareness in a community that may not have us above the fold in terms of capital matters, because every dollar matters. And so the earlier that we're talking about it, and whatever position people take, the worst thing would be, hey, what's that election? What's that thing that went on last Saturday? We don't want that. We don't want that. And so you allowing me the platform to be able to bring this up tonight is much appreciated. And it's going to be on us to return to our to return to Cohasset in multiple formats to be able to explain it in more detail. As I said, those ballpark numbers I'm giving you, we'll be able to put a finer point on. And once I can say, the MSBA has said, you're good to go. We've officially approved this grant. And now let's look. Let's look at some. Let's look at some cost impact here. Mr. Chair, I'll end there and see if you have time allotted. I'd be happy to answer some questions or.
If any of the members have questions for Mr. Hickey, please go ahead and ask them. I would remind everyone that this is very early on. This is merely a preliminary sort of informational sharing here that the superintendent has been kind enough to appear before the committee and express. But if anyone has any questions, feel free to ask. It's very early on.
Indeed.
Just now.
First, thank you for coming. This is this is helpful, and I'm a huge fan of vocational schools. I think that's a way of the future. One question for you on the how much structure the agreement works.
Sure.
In the January vote, if that passes 50%, no, I assume it's 50% of all towns voting.
It's the it's an aggregate vote, and zip codes don't matter.
So if that passes, then are all towns bound to fund?
Correct. Any other questions, Superintendent?
Just just a comment. Excellent presentation. Thank you for very nice material.
Certainly.
Is George Cooney still there?
Yes, he is. George joined me at the select board meeting last night. Unfortunately, he wasn't available tonight. But yes, George is still on board representing you and us.
Okay, very nice.
Any other questions for Superintendent Hickey? Okay, seeing none. Superintendent Hickey, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much.
Pleased to meet you.
Thank you.
And good luck with your project.
Thank you.
More than one reason. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do not have any additional invited guests tonight, so we turn to the next agenda section, which is our superintendent's report. And I turn the meeting over to our superintendent's schools section.
Thank you. So I'm going to start this evening with some celebrations. Really celebrating our high school tonight. And I have a an announcement that has been made and a new announcement to share, which actually isn't on the agenda, but came in this afternoon. So first want to continue to congratulate the high school for being a national blue ribbon award-winning school. We have a really nice certificate that has been sent to us from, you know, the representative of the congressional district from Massachusetts. Because we were awarded it, we are the only high school in the entire state of Massachusetts to be awarded the blue ribbon school. We were recognized by the Secretary of Education at the national level for being a high school that has been exemplary in closing the achievement gap. And so that's something for all of us to be very proud of. And I think that's something that really needs to be celebrated among our staff and our students in achieving that type of a distinction. It is a very prestigious award. Not many are given, and so we're very proud of the high school. In addition, we found out today that through the college board, the high school has been again named a platinum school for AP results. So what that means is that you earn platinum status if enough of your students experience one AP course before graduation. If 50% of your class who take the AP exam earn a three or above, and if enough students take five or more AP tests before they graduate. And Cohasset actually has 82% of our students who have experienced at least one AP exam before they graduate. 74% of our students receive three or better on their AP scores and potentially receive college credit. That potential is dependent on the school or university. They determine what gets credit and what doesn't. But just to be clear, the platinum criteria for that for receiving scores three or better is 50%. Cohasset is at 74%. So 74% of our students received three or higher on their AP scores. And then for students who are taking five AP exams or more before graduating, our students are 20%. So it's really amazing what they are accomplishing, the amount of AP courses that are offered at a school of our size and the amount of students who are taking the AP exams and doing so well is a credit again to our teachers and to our students who are working really hard as they take those AP courses. So something to celebrate in addition to what we already knew about our high school. And I think Principal Scott actually shared that out a little bit today, but we'll make some official notice soon. So congratulations to our high school.
Great news. Thank you.
Also want to take a minute and think about what's Books and Toys for their community conversation about the anxious generation. We had an amazing attendance at that event. It was attended by staff, by families, not just from Cohasset, but other communities as well as students. We had a really strong panel that included our own Mr. McKee, who's an English teacher here at the high school in Ella Lynch, a student. And it was really an interesting evening. I think a lot of us learned quite a bit about the impact that both cell phones and social media specifically and this shift in our society from play and at being averse to risk-taking have had on our children. And so what we are doing as a district coming out of that conversation are several things. And we're still continuing to come up with what this whole plan will look like. But at the high school level, Mr. Scott has put out a request for students, parents, and staff to be on a committee to look at what cellphone usage and what a future policy around cell phones will be at the high school level. He has had a really great response to that request, and I think actually seeking more people than what he originally thought because there were so many people who wanted to be part of that. So that's going to be an ongoing conversation, and I would expect that at some point in this current school year, that committee will be coming to you as a school committee to make recommendations for shifts in our handbook to how cell phones are used here at the high school. We had a few students at that community conversation who basically stood up and said, please take my phone. Not in those words, but that's what they were saying. They said, it's time. And so those conversations will be ongoing. And we've had conversations at the our leadership meetings about how each school is approaching these conversations, both in terms of what does play look like within the school day? And what are how are we using technology in general? Our elementary schools are easier because it's it's really not a place for cell phones or watches. Our middle school has been in the way for the day, excuse me, school for quite a while. But continuing to reinforce those rules and explain and talk to kids about it is really important. In addition, I mean, I'm curious to know if any of you took the challenge. In my newsletter, I put out a district-wide challenge, both to play, no matter how old you are. And this month's challenge is to get out there and hop, skip, jump rope, do something that you haven't done since you were a kid. And if you have a high schooler, drag those kiddos out there and do it with you. And the appropriate and safe risk that we're asking people to take this month is to try a new food. So maybe at the next meeting, we can all share what new foods we have. But we're trying to keep the conversation going and keep it at the forefront of people's minds because it is really important. And as Jonathan Haidt says in the book, it is a community-wide effort. It's not just us as a school. It's not just parents. It's not just the students. It has to come with all of us working together. So we're going to keep talking about it. We hope families will keep talking about it. So you'll hear more as the year goes on. In addition, I would like to thank Safe Harbor because they are supporting our efforts in this work. They, at the request of Ron Ford, who is the chair of our wellness department, is funding three different versions of the Screenagers video. So they started Screenager started as one movie that was really geared towards cellphone usage and has evolved so that now there are three movies. There's Growing Up in the Digital Age, which is for elementary, later elementary. So that's going to be a part of the health curriculum at the lower levels. Then there's Screenagers Under the Influence, which addresses vaping drugs and alcohol in the digital age. And that is now going to be a part of our seventh grade wellness curriculum. And then in our ninth grade wellness curriculum, they're going to be using Screenagers Next Chapter, which is mental health in the digital age. So all of it is connected to phone usage and what kids are seeing online and how it's impacting them and the decisions they make in their everyday life. And so we are grateful to Safe Harbor for supporting those efforts and keeping the conversation going in that way.
Great. Thank you.
And so on a totally separate note, I would like to share with you our district goals for the year. I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay. And I might need permission from the host to share. So in August, we had our leadership retreat. I just want to make this a little bigger so that people can see it. And as a district leadership team, we came together to do a lot of things. But one of those things was to think about what are our district goals for the year? And what will we be working on and working towards? This is an interesting year because we have completed a strategic plan. It ended at the end of last year in June. We will be engaging in a new strategic planning process in the spring, and I am brand new. So this is a bit of a gap year. I'm calling it a bridge year, a year that takes us from the end of one strategic plan to the new strategic plan. And I feel really fortunate that before he left, Superintendent Sullivan worked with the leadership team to think about here's as our as our current strategic plan. And here are the things that we need to continue and kind of wrap up before we start our new strategic plan. And we want to make sure that we're not introducing something new, brand new, before we start the new strategic plan. And so all of that aligned really well with what I was thinking as I came into the district. And so we worked as a team to prioritize those items that the leadership team worked on in the spring and to decide what is it that we want to work on for our goals this year. These goals also include some of my goals, personal goals as the new superintendent. And we did share these staff goals with the entire staff at opening day as well because I thought it was important for them to know that we're going to continue the work that has been ongoing. It's been really good, strong work. It's clearly doing what it's meant to do and achieving high levels of success for our students. And that it will give us an opportunity to finish some of the things that are multi-year goals that they had the gap. So we have six goals in total. So our first goal is our student learning goal for the district. And this is around our multi-tiered system of supports. It is a goal that, and just for people at home, that's something that you might hear us refer to as MTSS. It is how we identify our students who need additional support, how we decide what interventions they may need and require, and how we implement those interventions, how we use data to determine if those interventions are working or not, and what may need to either be done differently or if they sort of graduate out of MTSS because the intervention worked. And so the goal for this coming year is really to identify and ensure that we have a consistent process across all levels, pre-K through 12, and to create an opportunity or a, I'm not going to use the word brochure, but it's a a way of communicating out to families what our entire process is. Right now, I think families hear MTSS. They don't necessarily know what that means. So we want to be really clear and transparent with families what it is, what is happening when their children begin to be in the MTSS process, how parents are involved in that process, and what type of communications going back and forth while a student may be engaged in the MTSS process. So our goal this year will be to align all of our systems and provide documentation that outlines those consistent processes and share that with families. Our second goal is really just my goal as a new superintendent is to learn how to be a new superintendent. It's going to be me participating in the new superintendent induction program that Maureen LaCroy, my coach, shared with you when she was here at the last meeting. It's a series of classes that I will be attending with all the other new superintendents across the state. It includes my entry plan work. It includes the findings that I will share with you in the spring. And I have also included the educational visioning process that we're engaging in through the feasibility study and the strategic strategic planning process that we'll be doing in the spring. So that all of that combined will will lead to sort of this next step in where we are as a cohesive public schools. Third goal, you've been hearing for a few years that as a district, we are mapping curriculum and creating or adopting and implementing benchmark assessments. That's been an ongoing effort. The goal is to complete that work by the end of this school year. Dr. Stollins and Rob Roberts have been leading that work. And all of the teachers have been using a lot of our professional development time to complete the work. We will continue to do that this year so that at the end of this year, all of that documentation will be complete and we'll be able to start sharing it publicly this summer. That's the goal, so that families will have overviews of what is happening at each grade level or within content areas as their children move through the different schools in the Cohasset district. Our fourth goal is to continue to address social emotional wellness among all of our students. Last year, with the generosity of our net program. Last year, with the generosity of our net program, we have started to do some restorative justice training for staff. And while that when we hear the words restorative justice, when we hear that, we think of a lot of different things. In our case, it really is around community building and building the foundation for respect and empathy among all of our students. And so there is a team, there's a leader of restorative justice leadership team that has started to be trained last year. We are continuing to train staff this year in tier one of restorative justice practices. And we are starting to build an implementation plan to roll out community building circles at the secondary level. We actually are starting to do community circles with all staff. We did it on our opening day. We will continue to do it on October 11th, which is not this, not this Friday, but the following Friday, our full day. And then again, on a full day in March. Um, it's where we bring staff together in small community circles of possible districts. So you may have a pre-K teacher with a 12th grade teacher. Um, and we're learning to who we are and what we all believe in becoming a a community of educators rather than just independent schools. And that's the work we wanna do with students too, because what we all know each other and we all understand where we have commonalities, where we may have differences of opinion, but can respect each other's differences of opinion and have those conversations together. That's when we have really strong um school districts where we can learn and grow and build our social emotional capacity to get along with one another. And so that work is happening over the course of this year as well with the intention that towards the end of the year in the spring, we will also be mapping restorative practices to the responsive classroom curriculum at the elementary level. They're very much aligned. Um, the responsive classroom curriculum is actually done in a circle and um really is building it those same SCL competencies. So this will be a nice alignment. Our fifth goal is around resources. Um, it's really important that we, as a district, assess and analyze all of our resources, including staffing, budget, transportation, class size, time on learning, technology, et cetera, so that we can engage fully in our strategic planning process in the spring and also really forecast our future budget needs. Um, because it's gonna be really important as we move forward in tough economic times that we know exactly what we have and how we can move forward from there to continue to provide the same level of service to our students and to grow at the same time. Both of those are really important. So we have already started some of this work and we will continue to do this work over the course of the year. And of course, part of this is our feasibility study for the middle school. And then finally, we will continue to focus on communication and engagement. We want to do some learning here around how we can better engage families and all families in different ways. There's the one-way communication, right, which is all of our newsletters that are being sent out. But how can we engage families on different levels? I think that's really important. We're seeing that with these conversations around cell phones and social media. Because all of our children require all of our effort and our attention. And so how can we, how can we get better at that as a district? And so as we learn how to do that better, we will also continue to think about um planning and executing three new family engagement opportunities this year at different levels and different schools that hasn't existed. Because we want to be continuing all of the conversations and engaging all families in different ways. Um, so those are our goals for the year that we're proposing. Um, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you very much for your update and for the presentation of the district goals. Superintendent Shannon, are there any questions for Superintendent Shannon relative to anything that she updated the committee on? Or the district goals, just move around in a medical order, starting with Mr. Carr.
Excellent presentation.
Mr. Dial.
Uh, no questions from me. I applaud the goals, especially the financial goals. Those will definitely be very important this coming school year. So thank you for putting this together.
Mr. Dial, this is Hannah.
Thanks for putting this together. Again, appreciate the goals and everything. Um. One question I have is around the blue ribbon communications. Um, just curious on like how we're getting that widespread to the whole community. Um, I think it's a huge opportunity, you know, just in the sense like we've talked about it in the past that um, you know, we have a lot of students that go off to all like private schools. And there's an assumption, whether it's an assumption about the school, whether it's the facility, anything else. Like, I think this is a great opportunity, especially as we go into the facility planning. Um, that we should be like shouting from the, especially since it's the only school in Massachusetts.
Yeah.
I think that's huge. And just also educating the community on like what it means to be a blue ribbon school.
Yeah, no, those are great questions. We've shared it in newsletters. The Cohasset Inc. did an article as well. Um, but I think that one of the things we'll do is they did send some um logos, so adding that to things that come out from the district so that it's something that people see routinely. But as you're saying that, and I don't, I will need to do a little thinking around how do we get that to families that aren't a part of the district, right? Because that, other than the anchor. Um, so I can ask Chris Senior, who's been great and has volunteered his PR department in his um you know, how he does the five things about Cohasset for the week. I can ask him to put that up because that would get to everybody.
Yeah.
As well. Um, but I'd be open to other suggestions as to how to reach families that aren't already a part of the district.
Once we get the imaging.
Yeah.
Um, it may be worthwhile to explore how much some, you know, vinyl banners might be.
Yeah.
To put those in uh either in the gymnasium or in the main stairwell on the wall there. I mean, everyone pretty much is gonna go by that. Also, uh, outside by the sign, there's a, we used to remember where we put the um uh congratulations to class of 2020 banner when we were during the pandemic and we, we yeah, they they had a kind of an off year in terms of graduation. That would be a probably a good place to put it too. So I think it's a really good point that Ms. Hannah brings up, and that would probably be a fairly short money uh way to advertise that to everyone. Um, you know, even people that don't necessarily live in town that are driving by to sports events to, you know, it's a big accomplishment. So uh, while we don't rest on our laurels, it is nice to celebrate some accomplishments from time to time.
Yeah.
Thank you for that um input, Ms. Hannah. I'll work with you, Superintendent Shannon, try and figure that out. Um, it's a really good idea. Ms. Luskey, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, so the school we came from in Maryland, um, had the same thing happen. They ended up putting like a permanent icon outside on like the school building. Um, which I have a picture of because we actually recently went there and it was still up and it still looked good. It was dated, obviously, from after the day. But it is like, I think the point is like, I think it's great around the school. But so people can, that aren't in the school can actually see it. And it's not, I worry about the vinyl banner kind of getting old.
Destroyed.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I envision taking it down at some point, but if it's talking about permanent, then.
Not permanent, but it was like multi-year, like.
I think permanent, but movable to a new building maybe.
Yes.
Yeah, if you could send me a picture of that, that would be great. Oh, thank you.
Sounds great. Uh, and we can always do both, right?
We can.
Yeah.
So, uh, thank you, Ms. Luskey.
Also appreciate the presentation, um, start to finish, um, and would just add on to what Ms. Hannah was talking about um around, I guess it's sort of a question about the the platinum AP status and what AP classes are we offering? I don't know, and I don't know where to find that information. Is there a coursebook so that when we're talking about, you know, maybe families considering private schools, that they really understand, they make an informed decision around, you know, what are the offerings at the high school level um in particular? Um, and what are those AP classes? And also just to sort of know how many of these AP classes are offered by the district and how many are kids taking on their own initiative through other um avenues? Um, and and making that a sort of highlight too, that it, I I'm assuming there's a very robust curriculum and robust offerings. Um, that should be something that is that is put forward uh to the general public. And I think too, just in terms of the PR, I think it's also important that people outside of Cohasset see Cohasset as a great district. Because I think that helps people in Cohasset believe they're in a good school district. Is when someone else says to them, they're pediatrician or they're whoever, oh, that's a great district. Oh, weren't you just a blue, blue ribbon? So it's more of a sort of regional piece in terms of elevating that um overall understanding or or thoughts of the the ele- um lost like train, but how how we understand the school and evaluate school internally.
Yeah, I'm actually thinking realtors, like making sure that they have like that. I'm only, you're talking about in the AP stat, which I think they're on program of studies, making me think, all those classes are in there. But it's not, but the AP courses aren't listed in one spot with everything, right? So they're all in the program of study, but makes me think about how to, like, like, kind of, like, marketing.
Cool infographic, like, we have, um, you know, 16 varsity teams. We offer 25 AP courses. You know, X percent of our faculty hold advanced degrees, whatever those metrics are that make our school special. Um, and putting them front-facing is a really.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, alright.
And I like the idea that town is going to um leverage their PR team. And like, especially with all those realtor sites and everything else. So I think we can lean on them probably for a lot of the infographics as well.
Those are great ideas.
All right, well, we do have to move on, but um and Ms. Luskey, what you were referring to, I reminded me of one of the school committee's goals as well, and I feel incorporated into that sort of brochure that are, right, we're trying to move on.
Yeah.
Uh, but we will move on. Thank you very much for your update and report, Superintendent Shannon. Move right into agenda section E, which is teaching and learning, section of our agenda of our meeting. And I will turn the meeting over to our assistant superintendent of schools, Dr. Leslie Stollins.
Thank you. So um this will be brief. Um, MCAS scores, uh, they've been released by the state. So the accountability reports are out there. We just received student reports. So families can expect those results by the end of October and we'll be posting them in Aspen. We did that last year. They will not be going through mail. Um, and so we'll be sending out information so everyone will know when that happens. Um, and staff are now getting those, that information, and we're doing our data analysis. So you know, it's nice for us to get a little bit organized before we get it all out. So teachers have the information to talk to families about it. Uh, but we also don't just look at the MCAS scores when we're doing those data analysis. We look at our benchmark assessments that we have and kind of look at what's going on for our students, like we're trying to patterns um around the curriculum pieces and where our students are meeting expectations, but also then specifically and what we need to do for them. Uh, and then next Friday is a full PD day for our staff, so for students. Uh, some of the topics that we will be working on our benchmark assessments, in particular, six through 12, but all the whole district is working on those, as you saw in our goals, elementary kind of already has some in place, because we have just the curriculum set up a little differently. Um, we'll be doing some data analysis and then we'll also be but that's, that's a very reach, what we're doing. So um, but when our next meeting, I'll kind of go over in a little more detail about what happened. That's it.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stollins. Any question for Dr. Stollins? Moving around and getting an alphabetical order, Mr. Carr. Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Dial. Ms. Hannah. Ms. Luskey.
Yes. I I think you alluded to it, but I wasn't quite there. Should parents expect to hear from the district if there are sort of, if there are some concerns about their child's performance? Um, knowing that the MCAS is only one measure, but if MCAS plus some of those other early assessments that may have been done, or that there are trends um that are concerning, um, parents can expect to be contacted by the school.
Well, yeah, depending on the age, right, depending on um what what the needs of the students are, and they may get some information on MTSS. They may be having um support from reading mass specialists, the elementary, secondary, at the middle school level. Um, all of those. Great question. And they'll be getting all of their fall assessments. Everything will be published in Aspen. So it's kind of a once, like one place for everything, which I think.
And will I ready and MCAS be released at the same time?
Uh, I can't say that they'll be released at the same. They won't be far away from each other. Yeah, so, yeah, we're trying to get, trying to get it all together.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Luskey, and thank you, Dr. Stollins. I complete your report. All right, well, then we'll move into section F of the agenda, which is our uh budget resource governance section. Turn the meeting over to our director of finance operations, Susan Owen, to give us a budget update, a transportation report, and an explanation of the gap.
Thank you. So this this report is representative of month of July and August. Um, to get us started, and then the next school committee meeting will will be called up and we get, we'll report September. Um, the school budget for the FY25 was voted at twenty-three million nine oh nine four oh seven, plus a separate one-time allotment um with the town granted to us to cover the the shortfall in our special education due to the loss of circuit breaker and increased tuition. So total budget is twenty-five, twenty-four million two hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and six dollars. It's available to us to spend FY25. Uh, as of the end of August, we've expended about 1.3 million. We've encumbered about 2.4 million in supplies materials. Um, my, my, the business office and I are working to come up with a way to uncover our payroll. Um, it's seriously, we can encumber like a purchase orders and encumber all supplies materials, but the payroll just gets spent down every two weeks. So I'm gonna try to encumber it so we have that money set aside. Um, so may get further into the year, it will, it will give us a clear, clear idea of when we need to freeze other budgets in order to at least make up the goal. Over the summer, the only salaries that are paid are administration, central office, secretaries, custodians, our summer staff, school staff, and IT. So you won't see any of those salaries, any of the salaries expended. You know, teachers, parent professionals, cafeteria, bus drivers, all the staff began in September. At this point, very early on, we've only had a couple periods, so we're concerned. Our supplies, materials, we're watching very closely. Um, we're asking all departments to stick within their budget. Um, we have closely monitoring each and every account, and we're freezing them as they become zeroed out. There is no more running this one over tomorrow from that one. Um, as as been a lot of past years, um, when when you are out of money, you are, you are out of money, and the only the only override will be moved by the superintendent. So we're very conscious of this year. We're on a very tight, tight budget. Um, next in this report just shows you um each school, what they've spent today. A circuit breaker, um, circuit backup funding for FY24 was 1 million 177034. Due to our budget shortfall last year, at points that we had to utilize our majority of FY24 circuit breaker, which is not currently our practice, we just carry that. Come on in, um, we did not use all of it. We have a balance right now of about ninety-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-one of this year's circuit breaker that we can use to fund. And then we have yet to receive FY twenty-four circuit breaker notes. Capital outlay, just let's say, you know, what what we voted for for capital outlay, a school bus lease, uh, electric bus, furniture, replacement of Beijing Pro Books, um, our smart panels, and our DHL Pro Books. And then the separate items for capital outlay stabilization fund, which was the 150 for the middle high school fire study, fire alarm study, and then 300,000 to complete DHL. Um, DHL is complete. Um, had a couple little glitches, but they're they're good to go now. Um, school looks spectacular. And our grants, unfortunately, every year you think our grants would go up, but every year our grants go down. So you can see here as highlighted, um the grants that we have are the same, pretty much the same grants we get every year, and then we end up losing grants. So um, you can see that the spend improvement grant, far, far right, you can see in red, it's decreased by eighteen eleven. The school sped IDA grant, the substantial education grant, um, was dropped by a thousand and eight three. The school title one grant was dropped altogether, so we no longer have any title one funding coming our way. And that is based on leave our low-income and free reduced numbers. And then at the very bottom, you'll see, we have the one-time grants that were um expanding high-quality instructional math, science, middle school, and investigating history. So again, that was a loss of that grant funding as well. So this year our grants are minimized, to say the least. Um, but unfortunately, we did lose the title one, um, which was funding a portion of our reading teacher. The next part of the report, um, our revolving funds, and you can see our fund balances, which were very high a few years ago, are now um minimal. They, we have expended them. They, we have expended them down to, to a comfortable number. There is no excess in any of our revolving funds. Our school facilities, which was running in the red, is now caught up. So there's a 2,000 sitting there. And then you can see at the bottom, our school lunch program. Mr. Cordon has been diligently purchasing new equipment and upgrading everything under the sun. So you can see we're down to 175,000, not worried at all. We were in the 400s. We haven't received any of our reimbursements from the state yet because it, over the months of July and August, we don't, we don't receive anything.
That's great. We wanted to use that money.
The next slide is just gives you a breakdown of our FTEs. Summary by regular education salary, we needed professional education salary and all the tribute salary, what percentages are. And then again, each school and what their FTEs are and how they're funded, either by the budget or by grants we involve. So you can see each school, how many FTEs they have at each position. And then utilities. So this is for the month of July and August. As I said, we are up, we had down last year at this time. But we are down in kilowatts. So obviously the costs is up. Could be based on contract, could be, you know, is it energy being used during peak hours? Peak hours are cost more than non-peak hours. For July and August, kind of skewed report because Osford, they haven't had problems, they haven't read the meter, they can't get it to work. So there's no data for July and August for Osford. They're working on it. They are aware of it. So those numbers are, are not really a clear number because we've been missing one of the schools. Just the highlight of grants and what they fund, how many FTEs and which grants. Same with revolving accounts. Our enrollment, um, coming into September. Our enrollment is down a slight, slight bit. I think we're like 14,02, 14,06, we're down at 13,97. And then just, you know, quick updates, you know, food service had a very successful year, that 23, 24 school year. We all wanted it to be one of the best food service programs in, in the state, and I think we're probably there. We have, it was reported to me that just for the month of September, we have far exceeded our daily meal sales, which is usually run between high 300s to low 400s. They're selling well over 500 meals a day. So it's booming. And we get the pizza is selling out. They're doing really, really well. Transportation, which we will discuss in more depth in the next part of the report. But just to rewatch the presentation, ridership has increased. We, we had, the first week of school, we had over 80 families registered through this school. So we are close to capacity at most of our buses, and you will see now in the next presentation. Come from that, and then it's just a process of what's been going on over the summer. Any questions on that?
Thank you, Ms. Owen. If there are any questions for Ms. Owen relative to the budget update, let's ask those now. Mr. Carr? Mr. Dial?
So I know we're going to talk about transportation report, and as I said, we want to cover this there, so we can, we can hold the question. But still going back and looking at our, um, I don't know, what do you call this report? School budget summary report. So we're looking at general fund and we see that the, um, we expended on transportation line items, 60 and 65, especially at transportation for '24 was expended at $468,000. We've only budgeted $377,000, which is a gap of about 91K for system for '24. We expended regular transportation, $526,000, only budgeted $342,000, which is a gap versus last year of $154,000. So adding those together, you've got about 100, about a $240,000 gap. Are we expecting increased efficiencies so that we hit these budget numbers? Or do we need to cover that there or are there other plans to make sure that we don't have 2024 expenses against the 2025 quota?
So we are still looking at that. I think that's part of that bigger budget analysis to see where we may be able to help that shortfall by not doing some other things. So we are definitely looking at that because we know that's going to be a concern. And some of that will be addressed in Susan's report.
But the quick answer is that that isn't projecting shortfall.
So the gap is on your radar and we're, we're, we're putting it, okay.
Yeah.
I'll continue to ask.
Yeah, yeah, right. Now, that's, that's a good question. We talked about, you know, even though, do we consider raising, raising fees? You know, how, how do we come up with other areas to fund it or do we take from other, other parts of the budget? So, um, so we're kind of shooting right at working on that, line by line.
Yes, we are.
Or do we not buy things that we, that we don't necessarily need?
Some of that as well.
Uh, any other questions, Mr. Dial?
No.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hannah, do you have any questions relative to the budget update? Miss Leskey, do you have any questions relative to the budget update?
Yes, I'm an engaged participant tonight. How does usage of electricity care summer months versus, this seems high to me. And I have no point of reference. I have a home, so I'm not dealing with huge buildings. But this seems like a lot of electricity to be consumed in buildings that are relatively quiet or at least much more quiet than they are during the school year. And it, so I would just love to know i- if there's a way to do, I don't know if there's anything to do. It's just, I guess it's a question. Is this actually a lower summer bill? That's a question, sorry. Yeah, so is, is our usage lower, our, our electricity usage lower in July and August than it is, say, in March? When there are no vacations and the schools are being used five days a week?
Are some of the, some, some of the electricity is still, or energy is still being utilized? You know, for example, like this building, uh, open pretty much all summer. So we don't, the light cannot shut off, the, the cooling system does not shut off. I mean, there are timers that they, you know, they kick on at eight and they usually kick out about two during school and they stay on a little bit longer. So there are some areas, but most of my buildings are utilized all summer.
Osford is used by the right department, DHL is used by the right department. We have our extended, yeah, extended school year. Is that Osford and then up here and, and then custodians are working hard to clean everything, so then they're using.
Yeah, so that's, that's sort of, that is making up for the, and the.
It's not right, it's not that no one's here, right?
Using it.
Yeah.
I mean, there were, there were some savings in the summer because, like, our custodians, for example, work the day shift. So if the building isn't open, a little, a little. And I do have, I mean, I have it month by month. Well, I can also go back and look at my old reports.
Alright, is that it, Miss Leskey? Alright, well, thank you for that budget update, Ms. Owen. Let's move right into the transportation report, please.
Trying to get the slide. Yeah, you see slideshow at the top, so go, see where it says file and then go across. For the very top.
See, mine's blocked by.
Oh, you can't see where it says slideshow.
Yeah, I heard it's blocked by the, by the ribbon on top.
You can pull the ribbon down. Click on the ribbon and move it down.
Oh, what is it?
I didn't know you could do that.
That's cool.
Alright, transportation report. Transportation, we have a lot of information to go over.
And to that point, Ms. Owen, on slides that have a lot of written content, you don't need to read the entire slide. I'm saying you would, just saying sometimes that happens. So if you can do your best to summarize it as we move around, move, move, move through this. I mean, people have the packets, able to review them. This will be a bit made available to everyone, so I don't think we need to read it out loud or anything like that.
Right. On the next slide, that'd be great. I have another one. So questions have come up. Buses, bus drivers, ridership, currently have 11 full-time, lot of writing on here. You can see progression of how we ended up, you know, we ended up, how many buses we have right now. We, we have eight police buses, we have one electric. Our eight police buses have the capacity to leave town, the electric one does not. And if we have a bus out for service for more than a week, we may end up double up our weeks. Which is something that we, you know, we've tried to prevent ridership, maximum ridership. Talked about, you know, what we can.
There you go.
This is the ridership for FY '23. You can see we're at a total of 790. And hoping down by grades, the no qualm, although the students that we, that don't pay a fee because we're required by law to transport, the yeses are on the paper rights. And then we have the same thing for '24, gone up to 803. '25, we're at 838. This is for July and August, so we have since had more. Add to that for the month of September, that first week we had, I think in addition to Eve. So you can see our ridership is, is definitely growing. These are the actual bus routes right now and what the ridership is. So you can see we've started two buses that are at capacity already. So bus two, bus six, bus eight, bus eight, they're at capacity. And typically the elementary route of what drives, how many buses you need. Because middle high school, a lot of, a lot of kids drive, they come in the morning, power's dropped a lot for the elementary routes. However many buses we needed, it's different for elementary ridership. This is just a route history, how we started. We had six routes, then went to seven, then went to eight. We went from three tiers to two tiers. At one point, we rented a bus for an entire year. Second year, we rented two buses, two drivers. Last year, because of the landtime on getting the electric bus, we had to, again, lease a bus from first student. Our driver, their bus, but again, bus, bus, bus. Sports trips, last year, we had to cover, cover almost all of them. The few that we couldn't cover, just to give you an example, when we ran a sports trip, it cost us 160, which is just a driving salary. When Charles Transportation did a transportation process, it was $765. So it's important for us to try to do our own trips and not have to outsource or contract out to other places. For it's continued, I'm not going to read through it, just, you know, if we have a bus that breaks down. We have one bus right now, obviously, which is broken down, so we really only have one speed bus right now. It's the electric bus we don't like to send out of town. There is a, you know, it was requested to have two 15-passable vans for the athletic department so they can provide their own transportation. We have 45 athletic teams that use our buses when available. 26 of these teams could be transported by one van, 14 teams could be transported using the two vans. So, you know, just scenarios, sports trip last June, we didn't have enough vendors, we had to cancel a trip. We received a trip that needed two of our buses. One bus was out of service, we had to borrow a bus from Citroen, which comes in cost. This year, we've already borrowed a bus from Citroen three times. So here's just some of the, the rates and what it's going to cost if these, these trips come, upcoming trips. Sports trips that our transportation department cannot cover. So we are outsourcing and you can see what the cost is. It, it's astronomically different versus the $32 an hour for our drivers. We have said Meco, Meco transportation, Meco grant, the Meco grant fully funds on Meco transportation and our staff. So that doesn't come into play with any of our regular day-to-day in-town transportation. Summary of what the budget looks like, showing the shortfall year-on-year. So you can see the school budget and last year, we expended $526,000. We only had a budget for 223, so it was a shortfall of 300,000 to go with. We had, Mr. Dial was looking at shortfalls, it's definitely shortfall. We can also see in the beginning years, like 2023, we had a carryover of 125,000. So that helped us along. Once we utilized that carryover is when we had to dip more into the school budget versus the revolving account. Because the revolving account wasn't generating enough revenue to cover. Up to 50% of the transportation cost, which is why it gets transferred over to the school budget and puts the school budget into a deficit. This is just a breakdown, some of the breakdown of, in '23, we had eight drivers, it shows the hourly rate. And the total salaries were, so total salaries were 346 in '23, 43 in '24. And then it gets into, you know, the bus fuel, the bus expenses, the bus leases, and then the bus parking. So in '23 and '24, because we were borrowing and leasing buses and drivers for, for a student, it definitely did hit the transportation budget hard. It did pretty much expand most of our revolving account right down to $4800. Future considerations, you know, we're, to potential, Shane and I, along with office staff, we're looking at roots and staffing assessments. We need potential budget request to increase the lineup, which we did last year on our draft. Beginning stages budget, we asked for an increase to transportation, we asked for an increase in, in other areas. Based on the funding that we were allocated from the town, we couldn't add anything other than it covered our roll over costs and our contractual obligations. There was no room to add to the budget this year going forward. So again, Shane and I have talked a lot about it. We're going to have to ask for more. I mean, there's no, there's no way around it. I mean, times have changed, things have increased and we're, we're not seeing the increases that we need to cover just what our basic transportation needs are. And we also have a potential budget request for additional washes and revients. And we need to look at fee structures, fee structures, get up to the high end of what surrounding towns are. But other than increasing our lineup in the budget, the only other way to generate revenue is to raise fees. And I think, I guess you would ask for details, so at the end of this, this presentation, there's links. It will give you an option just to show you what.
I hope my links don't work.
So if you click on the link, I've given you the breakdown. Straight out of our accounting system, it shows our salaries, week to week, our transportation, supplies, materials, what we spend. Transportation other, which covers fuel, DUT. And so forth. So, you know, I'm not going to go into further detail on that, but those links are there, so you can see the last three years, both revolving and regular transportation, every dollar we spent and where. Questions?
Alright, thank you, Ms. Owen. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Owen relative to that fairly concerning report? Mr. Carr?
Broad comment, I, it's obvious we need to dig in on this. It's challenging.
Mr. Carr? Read, Mr. Dial?
Yes, don't, don't, I might exceed my time. Don't, 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 don't do that. Don't do that. This is the oversight function. Alright, so, Ms. Owen, thank you. I think for the first time, since I've been here, I actually really understand our transportation. This is a phenomenal presentation, very well organized. I very much appreciate it. Let me just run through, make sure I've got some facts and have some questions. So we have currently eight routes. That excludes route number one, we're excited to move that out. That's the, that's the back cover. We have eight routes, we have nine buses, plus a spare.
Spare's out, Sarah's probably going to be.
Oh, we, we have it.
They hold a piece of paper down in place, yes.
But I mean, it could be, we have it, it's, it's a, it's a thing.
It is.
Maybe we can take a wheel off. But we've got nine buses.
We have ten buses.
Yes, one of those is a spare.
One of those is a spare.
Yes, okay.
One of them is dead.
Yeah, that's the.
One of them's the electric.
Yes, we've got eight gas buses, an electric bus and a spare.
Yes.
A dead spare, okay. Now, one of the questions I know we received, I received during the budget process last year is. If we have eight routes and nine buses. Why do we need nine buses for you? Know what I mean?
Yes. Why?
Yes.
If one of them breaks down.
But we have a spare, well, the spare's broken. If we had an operating spare. We could, could we have nine, nine buses in the nine routes?
Yes.
Except that. Then we can.
The latest transportation from the elementary schools goes later than any of our sports chains leave. For their sporting events.
I'm bifurcating squad, but sports, we have to deal with sports, but yes, that's.
So that's a concern.
So then we would not have any buses to allow for sports.
Correct.
So let's get, could get back to the vans, I should get to structurally do that, because we'd have to use our spare bus to do sports. This is like a logic game, so. Okay, so that's a good answer to that question. We need an extra bus because we've got sports transport obligations, okay? We have eleven drivers. We are paying them, based on the, based on the salary numbers, it looks like we're paying them. An annualized salary of about forty three thousand each. Do they get paid even when they're not driving? They just only have eight routes. And and nine operating buses, that's two drivers that are not going to drive their day.
Yes. But they are, they're, they're easy. So for the first month, which was just completed. Several of the buses had wanted to some. One, because we had one bus that was having problems. Overcrowded, we got so crowded. Two, we wanted clear, I want to clear ridership numbers, so I asked that they ride those buses. For a week or two and take. One by one attendance of who's riding and how many, so we have a clear. Because a lot of times, if we go into the software and it says we have, you know, two hundred people registered, that doesn't mean two hundred are riding. Now we actually know how many bodies are actually on these buses. If someone is out, we need the spare driver. And most of our drivers are. Doing sports events as well. Sports.
Okay.
They do a lot of sports or field, right now it's not a big field trip time. The fare behind, you know, if you remember. Several years ago, we had such a shortfall of drivers, which. It's funny that Superintendent Picky brought it up, he asked if we were short. And we, we had a shortfall and, and, you know, we all said, just, what can we do? We need to, we need to raise the pay rate, so it's inviting to people, we need to raise the benefits, we need to have spare drivers, so we're not doubling up routes. So in order to cover all those things, we did, we did all of what was asked. We now have. Eleven drivers, eight buses. So if someone's out, we have coverage. But we still have enough drivers to do athletics if the buses are back in time.
And also, I guess, another reason for eleven drivers, maybe, maybe, maybe that's one, it's eleven, the right number, but our. Route are, are based on our carriage here, the number of kids in the elementary school and how close we are. We don't have a very resilient bus network, meaning if we lose one of these routes, we can't take all the kids.
Correct.
So we need redundancy in drivers, that, that makes a lot of sense to me.
I mean, honestly, based on the numbers that came out today, seeing the ridership. You know, the, the state, state ruling is, you know, elementary level, you can put three to a seat, which is seventy seven passenger. And we talked about that, they actually, you know, they measure. Butt size of an elementary child. Well, that's butt size twenty, thirty years ago, probably very different than what butt sizes on elementary kids now, not.
Especially with our boots.
And you've got to take into consideration, you know, if they're backpacks, if they're in, in, so to put three to every single seat is, isn't a possibility. And you can see there's several of those routes that are almost at that seventy seven. So they've got to get pretty cramped. So we definitely need to consider, you know, do we add a route, do we, as you said, do we use our spare bus to to make that route? And then figure out what we do with sports.
So my last request is. We had talked about in the last budget cycle, we can cancel four of the vans. I think that's a very valid request. Thing I think we need to show, we can make that request in our capital request for next year. And I think what we can, if we can show that. Having the vans would save us money. We've got one of the slides here that the Charles Transportation is seven sixty five, but we know that's nine hundred. On a later slide for actual live quotes. If we could show that by having vans, that eliminates. Eight thousand dollar bills, then that right there pays for the van. So if we, I mean, between now and when we start on a budget, if we can get that analysis together, if we can support that budget request.
I mean, we've been working on that, you know, just for example, Friday, this Friday and Monday, we don't have. Enough buses to transport our sports, so locomotion is contracted out to do it, and it's going to cost us forty five hundred dollars. The Charles Transportation is picking up nine. Trips for athletics, so we're already running into areas where we can't get our sports transported by our.
So that's. One of the questions that. If those, if that. Fifty thousand dollars of expense could be saved if we just had two vans, then that's, that's the pitch we need to make at the time. So. That's, this is. It's a uphill battle, certainly, we've got a lot, I, I do think. My recommended approach is the. We just, we just need to reassess the budget, like, I think this is too big of a gap to solve the fees, this, and we're already in the high end. It's, this is going to require more contributions for our, for our schools from the town. And we need to be able to make a strong case that we're doing everything we can to minimize that, but that's, that's my own view, Susan. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say one other thing? One of the things that we've had a lot of conversation about that we're gonna. Be really pushing hard is to try and get parents to actually sign up for the bus. Prior to the deadline, because we budget and we build routes for the number of students who register for the bus. And when eighty registrations come in the week before school starts, that changes everything. And so that is something that I think families will hear a lot from us, is if you're going to ride the bus, please register on time.
I think a late registration, significant and exorbitant, late registration fee would be very appropriate there.
Yeah, and we did talk about that, because right now there was a fifty dollar one.
Yeah, it's really five hundred.
And as somebody who is very new process. Like, yes, I want to be on it. Oh, now I have to go to my school box. Oh, now I have to get, like, it's not an easy process.
So we can look at that.
With a waiver for those who tried, a good thing.
Yeah.
And as someone who. Routinely has paid this district the late fee, a stronger late fee may have gotten me to.
Yes, yeah.
Do it on time.
So thank you guys for making me look at this and I'll see the balance of my, my time.
You have no balance.
I've overdrawn.
You also have a shortfall in terms of the timing, but Ms. Hannah, do you have any questions for Owen relative to the transportation?
I do have one question and maybe one comment. How do the actuals compare to the registered? Like, given this time of year, seeing all the bikers that are out there at that time. I can't imagine that these buses, I like, the winter months are going to be worse, I imagine, so how?
Right now, those, those numbers are actuals.
So there's on each one of these buses, like, everyone is riding the bus that signed up for it.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
And we literally had, like I said, them take attendance one by one coming on the bus, so we know, because in the past. We found that. How many registered weren't necessary, how many were riding.
Right. I can tell you my kids haven't been on, but we're registered.
Right.
Yeah.
There may be people who are on who are not registered.
I don't think so.
I got, I got flagged as, like, Duke rode the bus one day and I got flagged and I'm like, no, no, we're registered, we just live. Over on King Street, so it's a safety waiver that didn't show up in the registration, so. Ray came back and was like, no, you're registered, sorry, my bad. So they were double checking all that, that the non-registered people that are riding it. But I also, I just, with all the bikers, like, it is madness driving around here. Right now, with all the bikers and everything, but I just, it's hard for me to believe that they're. Like, and seeing the numbers of how many kids are registered in the schools and how many are registered on. Here, I just wonder if, like, we can rethink, like, okay, what do you do in the months where everyone's riding bikes versus in the winter months when they're. These numbers are probably.
So the, the one slide. That had the stodge on it.
Yeah.
Those are actually, those are actually numbers that.
Confirmed.
So if there's more, those numbers are going to be higher.
Yeah, no, I get that.
So.
Then we have a problem coming in the winter. We're gonna have a major problem. If these numbers are accurate to all these bike riders.
Well, what I hope is that. Families didn't think that they could just register for the bus when the weather starts to get bad. Because there may be no room on some of those buses.
I mean, it looks like we're close to the, the actual people, the kids registered in school right now, so hopefully, but, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what, what's gonna happen is that any of the pay to rides are gonna just, no. There is no room. And then the ones that require it, which are like the case of sex. What happened?
Just a comment, bus sim, bus six seems to, seems to be very popular in the afternoons when it gets back down. But feathering. Seems to be very popular in the afternoons.
Interesting.
What do you mean, Mr. Carr?
Like, thirty kids get off in the village.
They're using their transportation downtown.
But I think they're allowed to get off and stop at one, there's just.
Older kids.
Yeah, not the elementary bus.
Um, Ms. Hannah, is there any other questions you had this morning?
Yeah, I just think we have to, like, rethink how, I mean, it's. The number of kids that live within a one mile radius of the schools, like, there's a way to get them here that I think we. We just need to rethink and get creative. Would be my comment.
I think, Ms. Hannah, Ms. Lucy?
Thank you. And I think, you know, sort of what I'm struck by is the need. To be less reactive to our situations and more proactive, and I think the data that you gathered. And put forward is a really good start for that, thinking now about, is there going to be a possible surge in the winter? And how we're going to manage that, thinking now about whether or not there's a restructuring of fees, thinking now about how can we make. The schools more accessible to our walkers and riders and how do we, or bike riders, and how do we encourage that to lessen the stress on our bus, bus units? I think that a sort of long term approach and, and really paying attention to the data, it, it will really serve us well in terms of. Budgeting, because it, it is concerning. And then I just had a thought, which is, so contracting a charter bus for the afternoons, it, it, that's outrageous. Outrageous, would it be any less expensive to sort of flip that and say, okay, we're going to use our own buses for sports and we're going to hire. A charter for just the bus route? So it's to flip that around, it's not like an hourly, it's a flat rate.
It's like a flat rate, anywhere from. Five forty a day to. Two hundred something an hour. It's outrageous what they get.
Right, but if we just needed a bus to come and do a, an elementary route versus driving to. Some, sitting there for four hours and then driving back, that's the same cost.
It's not a bad thought, I, I.
Well, we did, we did do that when we leased the drivers and the buses from, for a student. And it, they wouldn't give us partial, that was for the day.
Okay, so they won't do it like a per trip, per route, you pay for the day, okay.
Okay, but Ms. Owen, can we do something, please? Can we, can we just? Can you get some quotes together on some hard figures from the company on, on that point? Let's just ensure that. That. Answer or that response is the same now as it was the last time you looked at it, okay? Because we've confronted circumstances in the past where. Things have changed, and I, I feel like we, we may be able, I think that's a really good point, it's like a thousand dollars, like. Each time, right? So if you can change that to two hundred dollars, that makes a huge difference over a season. So can we just, maybe a couple of different companies, I don't know how many vendors there are that do this, but can you just ask each of them? If it would be less money to do. A, a route. For an hour as opposed to a sporting event that is three hours.
Sure.
It's a flat rate, a flat rate, but if it's hourly, it could be, it's a really good point, so that would be helpful, and if you could let. Superintendent Shannon know what we discovered. The couple. So this is extremely concerning, because this isn't the only area that we're experiencing shortfalls in, right, this is just one. And so, like, we don't, we, we don't have enough for. Out of district tuition, we don't have enough for transportation, we don't have enough to expand some of the athletic programming and, and facilities and improve those, we don't have. You know. We're, 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 depending on how you look at the budget, we don't have enough to even pay the salaries every year, because we're short on everything else, it just depends on how you rearrange things, I mean, obviously, that's a priority. Make sure that we're able to meet that, but things are really tight, so. I, I applaud the district's efforts to. Fashion a goal around creating a sort of. Detail oriented audit of our budget and our spending. I'm, however, very skeptical that we're going to make up for all these shortfalls through these sort of. Intramural means that we're, we're discussing. And I, I don't know, and, and, and so simultaneously, it's, it's even more concerning, because the town itself. Doesn't have the money to. Properly fund all of its assets and make these infrastructure improvements that we're trying to make to the town that are needed, because. We sort of, I think, adopted a deferred maintenance plan in a lot of. In actual, a lot of departments, so. I, 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 I'm just, I, I'm, I'm sort of at a loss in terms of, 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 of how we approach this, I think that, 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 the suggestions are good and, and we need to do what we can. From an intramural perspective, but I, I think that we, we need to have a, a, and we're going to have a joint meeting with the select board sometime in the, not to just the future, so. We may have a, need to have a critical discussion about. How we're going to better fund our s- school department, because. It's gone from, I, I feel like it's going to get worse. You know, we, we were, we were okay for a few years, last year was the worst budget year I've seen, and since I've been on this committee. And now we're looking at all the numbers in the red, it's a really serious problem, it's, it's like a red alert, like a critical problem. And this is just one of them. And thank you for getting all this information together, Ms. Owen, it will help us wrap our heads around this one issue. I, I, I don't know, I'm gonna, you know, we'll, we'll get that joint meeting set up and, and this is going to be something that we need to really embrace, because I, I, it's going to. Adversely impact our operations if we don't get this done, I mean. So. I'm very concerned. And the public should be very concerned, the school family should be very concerned, everyone should be very concerned about what's, what's happening here. And it's not just limited to the school department, I think it's. Moving on to, if that concludes the transportation report, Ms. Owen?
Yeah.
All right, and there are no further questions from anyone? We'll move on to the, I guess. Slightly happier news about a gift from our PSO, Ms. Owen, could you explain to the committee what we're looking at there, it's been included in your package, is.
Can you share it?
Item F two.
Oh, no.
I, I don't have it on. So, if you remember, la- last year, PSO came forward to do a complete library refurbishment proposal. And in amount of fifty thousand dollars broken down over seven years, so in the twenty twenty three, twenty four epidemic year. The PSO gave us a twenty thousand dollar check to be paid in spring, which we did receive. Twenty twenty four, twenty five, which is this current year. The PSO gave us a twenty thousand dollar check to be paid in spring, which we did receive, um, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, which is this current year. They, they are, um, giving us the ten thousand dollar check, I have, have given us the ten thousand dollar check. Um, to go towards that fifty, and then each year, um, they'll give us a check until we get to fifty thousand dollars. And what that does is, um, it, it's basically refurbishing. The whole library, um, they did a, a huge inventory, I know. Got the three library, um, for man and did a demonstration and presentation on, on what excited she was, what books. And how they were deciding what was to keep, what was not to keep, so this, this is the donation that's, you know, scheduled as planned. To go towards the fifty thousand dollars of the total library refurbishment. So, I just would go accepting the ten thousand dollars.
Um, before we take the vote or, or ask for a motion to that vote, are there any members of the committee that have any questions about the gift or want to make any points about the gift? Just do so as well. Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the gift that's articulated by our Director of Plan and Operations a moment ago? Some motion that's been made by Mr. Dial, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Miss Hannah, all in favor? All opposed, sentience, motion carries unanimously, and we thank the PSO for this portion of story. Generous and necessary, yeah. Miss Owen, does that conclude your portion of the agenda?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Thank you for your updates. Moving on to section G, uh, which is our sort of school facilities, uh, related updates. Uh, I would turn to our superintendent of schools, Superintendent Sharon, Shannon, excuse me, to. Provide us with an update relative to the ongoing feasibility study.
So, we've actually have a lot of action since our last meeting. Um, since we were together last, we had, um, a team of folks who went on some site visits. We went to visit some schools, actually, Portland remained a little bit teaching and learning there. In addition to their learning spaces, and we went and visited the Gates Middle School in Situate, the Abington Middle High School. In Abington, and the Dearborn STEM Academy in downtown Boston. Um, we looked at all of it with regard to space, with regard to best practices for teaching and learning. Um, and it gives us a good sense of, you know, just what types of things are possible. Um, in terms of facility, in terms of what we see as student learning experience. And our task now is to come back as a district, and those aren't the only examples, we'll be looking at other examples over time as well. But the task now is to come back as a district and think about what do we want to be here and go have it, so. In order to be ready for that, we actually, um, another team of folks did a, a walkthrough of our. Actual middle school and high school to see teaching and learning in action and to see some of the spaces. That exist currently and how they exist, you know, closets that have been turned into offices or small learning spaces, things like that. Um, we've also had AI three here for two nights during the middle school, high school open house nights. And they, we did community events, community forums, they brought with them a large map. That lays on the floor that people can walk on, that's an aerial shot of the middle high school. Building facility and all of the surrounding land. And we had anyone who was interested in joining us, came in and asked questions, they gave suggestions. They talked about what they were thinking, we really tried to make a point that this is a study to learn. What is possible, we don't know what the answer is, this study is helping us figure out what the answer is for this middle high school facility. Um, starting this Monday, we're actually gonna kick off our three-part visioning workshop. To help create the educational vision that will, um, be the heart of what any new facility could potentially look like in the district. And we're really excited about that, we're bringing a lot of people together, it's gonna be administrators, it's teachers, it's students, it's families. It's folks from different committees and organizations in town, in total, we're gonna have about fifty people here in this room. Um, AI three and their consultant, um, MLP will be here to lead that work. And to, you know, we were, when we did our tour, and I keep using the word possibility, but we were in. Sarah Anthony's class, and she's a art teacher here at high school, and she said in the art department at our high school, they talk a lot to students about. Not doing what's expected, but doing what's possible, and not, it's thinking about what is just expected, but thinking about what's possible. And that's our task as we think about this new facility, and as we think about what teaching and learning and student learning experience can be in capacity. Not just at the middle high school, but all the way pre-K through twelve, and so this is the exciting part. Um, this is where we start to really think about and put. Put words together that become a building, um, so we're looking forward to that. We'll be together Monday from eight thirty to eleven thirty in the morning, and then two Tuesdays later in the month of October. Um, and then after those meetings are done, there'll be more to share, and I think at some point in the near future. It would actually be beneficial also to bring AI three back to this committee to do a, a short report. Um, about where the, where we stand with the facilities or the feasibility study. The other thing for folks who are in the community, if they're watching to know, is that. Once we get to this next phase, we will have another community session so that people can come, be updated, give input again. And so, our task is really to keep people as informed as possible along the way. Um, and we'll be communicating those dates out, I think the next date is actually in November, so we'll start communicating that out. Sooner than later as well, so people can plan. It's exciting.
Thank you Superintendent Shannon, are there any questions for the superintendent relative to the feasibility study update, Mr. Dial?
Um, so, I, I heard some, I was away and couldn't attend, there was some feedback, it's very good stuff. Uh, but one thing that, um, kept going through is, people kept asking, oh, we decided to build a new building. So I just wanted to clarify whether or not our feasibility study is just focused on new, new, a brand new facility? Or if we are still considering potentially renovation of, of significant renovation of the existing facility? And looking at all options.
Um, the feasibility study has to look at all options, um, nothing has been decided at this point. Um, we want the feasibility study to look at all options, and even if we were in the MSBA process, they make us look at all options as well. You cannot move forward with the MSBA unless you have exhausted all of the options. So that you could determine what the best right option is for us, so we have no predetermined decision at this point.
And I ask that because the presentation we heard at the beginning. Included a building of similar size, two hundred and fifty thousand square feet, I think our existing footprint is two hundred and twenty-eight thousand square feet. That comes in at a total of two hundred and seventy-six million dollars, which is a pretty high-watering total. Um, which also may impact what's possible.
Yeah, I think there are some differences there. What they need is very different than what we're gonna need, we're not gonna be outfitting a school for automotive. Culinary, all of those things, um, but that said. Having just been a part of a process that designed a new middle school for about a thousand students. That is just under two hundred thousand dollars, the cost of that building, so that's.
That's a deal.
Two hundred million, sorry, so that's about.
All over that.
Right, like, that's the ballpark, right? I think two hundred and seventy is high for us, but. Yeah, but that, I mean, that's, that's real.
Well, it's about eleven hundred.
Yeah.
Figure it out that way, but. Um, agreed, there's some, some programming there, major programming differences, but. Nevertheless, it's, it's, it's a, it's a figure, right?
Yes, it's a thing, some sort of.
It's a thing.
Well, I'm very glad we're doing this, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Khan, for being able to talk for.
My pleasure, Mr. Dial, uh, anyone else have questions for Superintendent Shannon relative to the feasibility study update?
I have more of a comment, um, I think that having AI come in and do go through that exercise, which I got to experience. I think was great, um, I know at the last minute, we tried to get like some Deerville families come over and stuff. I do think we, um, should engage the Deerville and Osgood families more with AI. Just given the fact that's the population that'll actually be in the building, um, just with comments kind of coming out of it. It's like, oh, I'll vote for it and do the right thing, because no one did the right thing for us, but our kids aren't gonna be able to, you know, so I think it's like. Trumping up that population is gonna be important.
Yeah. We invite, I mean, we invited them before that last minute as well, they, they were invited. When we first started inviting folks, um, but that said, we didn't get a lot of traction from the elementary families, so. Once we get to the next phase of information, we, and this is just something I've done in the past. It's taking the information like a roadshow, and going to the PSO meetings at the different school levels. Actually, um, one of them has requested that I come, and I can't remember which one, but I am going. I already told them I would go, it might be Osgood, um, and then, um, when you have. Pictures and design and things like that, going and bringing those materials to the schools at the different events. Because that's where you're gonna get more engagement, so here we had them backed up to, to open houses, so. You know, on the arts night or whatever the, you know, whatever day or night, or we can bring materials. And have those conversations at those levels because. It's true, it's the students who are in pre-K, K, and one, maybe, who are gonna be the students in these new facilities. Not those of us who have children at the middle school or high school level, even Deerville.
And I, I, I totally understand, like, we need the people that are in this building, we need their.
We need them to.
On like what would have been better and, and all of that, so.
So we need it all.
But remember, it's not just the school, right, so if, if we do end up considering a new project and they're going, the feasibility study will, uh, reflect on this. A lot of these. A lot of the, um, elements of a new building would, uh, be geared towards community at large usage.
Yes.
So, that's also an important element, right, so that we can maybe realize some economies of scale. You know, in terms of like other facilities that we might not have to build in town if we have, you know, the school that encompasses these. So, these are all like considerations, but, um, as far as that sort of PR point that you made, Miss Hannah. If you ever feel that there's an event that would capture an audience that you think is particularly valuable. Then simply communicate that to Superintendent Shannon, and she will communicate that in turn to AI three, who will absolutely. Come out and, and, and conduct a similar, um, presentation for that, I mean, if you, you know, so don't, don't, don't be bashful, I mean, you know. Request it if you think it could be helpful, if you think there's gonna be, you know, a hundred and fifty families somewhere tonight, and they're gonna be interested in that, then yeah, I mean, the one. Aspect of this, you know, a portion of the value of this feasibility study is to. Is to start the discussion so that everyone, so, so we can sort of start to manage expectations around the community about like, you know, what is happening? Is this gonna happen, is it on the horizon? Because there's a lot of infrastructural, um, changes that are proposed around town, so I think it's, it makes sense to be able to, so just, you know, propose them, if you, if you, don't, don't be shy, it's, it's. It would be beneficial to the community if you did that, yeah. Uh, any other questions for Superintendent Shannon relative, relative, excuse me, to the, um, feasibility study update you just presented? Okay, seeing none, thank you Superintendent Shannon for that report, and we'll move on to the next agenda section, which is H, which is the, uh. Updates from liaison roles or subcommittees. Are there any updates we'll go around the committee in alphabetical order, Mr. Carr, any updates from you? Thank you, Mr. Carr, Mr. Dial?
None.
Miss Hannah? Miss Leskey? Okay, uh, well, then we will swiftly move into the, uh, final section, final subsequent section of the agenda. There are no topics, uh, that were not reasonably anticipated, uh, Chair. We do, however, have minutes to approve all of our, um, currently backlog minutes, so this will actually, uh, get us. Up to date, and we thank Mr. Carr and Miss Fox for helping us with this.
Does someone together or one at a time?
I think, um, I think what we'll do is do it one at a time, uh, just, I just wanna make sure no one has any points relative to each one, so we'll just go through. So I'll just, so what we have is we have the minutes from, start, I'll just go in chronological order, June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. July tenth, August twenty-first, September fourth, and September eighteenth, which was our last meeting.
Thank you for your patience as I catch up.
Is a volunteer role, Mr. Carr, and you also have a job and children, and while that's not an excuse, it is a reality, and. We are doing the best we can with that, so, um, are there any questions or concerns or points relative to the. June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four minutes? Seeing none, I would accept that motion to approve the June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four meeting minutes, and, uh, as presented by our secretary. Uh, there's a second, Mr. Dial, all in favor, and remember, you can only vote if you were present at the meeting, so just note who is there. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, sentience, those minutes are approved by virtue of a unanimous vote. Moving on, July tenth, two thousand twenty-four, any questions or points relative to this set of minutes? As presented by our secretary. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the July tenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting minutes? Motion's been made by Mr. Dial and seconded by Mr. Carr, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, sentience. Those minutes have been approved by unanimous vote. August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, any points or concerns or questions relative to those meeting minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented by our secretary? Motion's been made by Miss Leskey, is there a second? Seconded by Miss Hannah, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Sentience.
Upset.
That motion carries virtue of a vote of four committee members, one abstention, Mr. Dial abstaining for having not been present at the meeting. Moving on, September fourth, two thousand twenty-four, meeting minutes. Are there any questions, points, or concerns relative to those meeting minutes as presented by our secretary? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve those meeting minutes for September fourth, two thousand twenty-four as presented by our secretary?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Mr. Dial, is there a second? Seconded by Miss Leskey, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Sentience?
I know we just approved this, but were you not at the meeting? I was not at the meeting. We need to make a revision to Mr. Carr for the attendance.
Are you, you were, you're sure you were in a September fourth meeting, Mr. Carr?
Just says Mr. Carr's not present. For roll, uh, probably reads, Mr. Carr's not present for roll call.
Oh, Mr. Carr arrived at six oh four P M.
I did?
Yes.
You, you may have just been a few minutes late, which is.
Mr. Dial noted for the record that Mr. Carr arrived. Could have been a different Mr. Carr, but I would probably not have noted him. I'd like to change my vote.
So, and just, and so, I, I, I see where the confusion was, because you were reading that emboldened text, but. The inattendence section up, up top will usually indicate whether someone was present in general for the meeting and not just. Late, so let's just take another vote on that, all in favor of the motion that was, I believe, made by Mr. Dial and seconded by Miss Leskey. Uh, all, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, abstentions, so that motion carries by virtue of a unanimous vote. And it, meeting, meeting, meeting minutes are approved, lastly, we have the meeting minutes from our September eighteen, two thousand twenty-four. Meeting, are there any questions or concerns relative to those minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes for September eighteen, two thousand twenty-four meeting as presented by our secretary tonight? The motion has been made by Mr. Carr, is there a second? Seconded by Miss Hannah, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, sentience?
Upstate.
Mr. Dial abstained by virtue of not being present. Motion still carries there, vote of four members, and those meetings are approved. Mr. Carr, thank you so much, Miss Fox, thank you very much, and Superintendent Shannon, I would ask that you please. Ensure that these are posted as soon as possible.
I have one question, somebody just have a look, make sure we've got everything, I think we have everything.
Yeah.
Okay, um, moving on, any future agenda items that anyone wants to suggest? Okay, moving on. Any future agenda items that anyone wants to suggest? All right, I do, I, I want to suggest that we start brainstorming about fundraising for the school within the school community. Mr. Kearney, when he was in the committee, had an interesting idea where there was a section of the website dedicated to that and you'd have specific items that were needed. And so for example, a van and the price of that and what the donation would be. And, you know, you never know if you don't ask. And we just had a very generous donation. We have a lot of generous donations, but one in particular stands out in mine, that our new scoreboard at the field. And that was a, a, a large ticket item, but someone privately donated the funds for us to do that. So I, I, I want to maybe put an agenda item, excuse me, an item on a future agenda relative to brainstorming a little bit about how we might fundraise for things that we need. And that arises out of the discussion we just had about our concerning shortfalls. It may be a way to combat some of this and you know, at least get some of these resources that were in dire need of. And it may not, people may not donate, but it may be, I just, I think there's a lot of, there's a little bit of a science to fundraising. So it, it couldn't, couldn't hurt to explore that a little bit. So I'm just going to put that on an agenda, on the agenda in the future. Anything else? Okay, seeing none. There is a reason to move into executive session tonight. That reason is number three. In subsection 21 of chapter 38 of our general laws for strategy related to collective bargaining. So we need to do so by stating the purpose, which I did, which I just did. And we need to take a roll call vote. And I will state on the record that we do not intend to reconvene, thank you, Mr. Dial, into an open session before adjournings. So we will adjourn straight from executive session. Having said that, is there a motion to move into executive session for reason number three? It's been made by Mr. Dials. There a second? All in favor and roll call, Mr. Carr?
Carr, aye.
Mr. Dial?
Aye.
Ms. Hannah?
Aye.
Ms. Lasky?
Aye.
Greg McLeod? Motion unanimously carries. We are now in executive session. We thank everyone for their participation in attendance tonight.
Good thing. George Cooney?
Have a great day.
That's who I thought you might be. This is Mr. Cooney who's on the, our committee member for the tech school.
This is social project.